I think we're almost ready to go. And I'm going to ask that folks in our audience, if you can, we have online a your questions section or to make comments. Could someone in the audience, in the virtual audience that is not in the real audience here, just indicate that you can hear us?
You probably need to tell them how to do that. Go to questions.
That's.
This thing, the mouse is terrible.
I have a mouse. See, I don't think there's any questions. Yes, we can hear you.
Sarah Deal.
We are sweet, 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 sweet. Okay. So. Only six minutes. So, no problem. My name is Chuck Boyd. I'm the Director of Planning Coordination for the Maryland Department of Planning. Welcome in person and online. Thank you very much for showing up today. In case you want to know, this is the Planet Commissioner Training. Open meetings will be starting at 10 o'clock across the way. So if you just want to get us for the first hour here or 15 minutes here and over there, you're welcome. So we have, just for some business, for those online, we know that you're online and we see how long you will be here. So if you're here for two, over two and a half of the three hours, you get credit. If you aren't in here for three hours and you log off, you ain't getting credit. We know who you are with respect to those that are online in terms of email. But in the audience, I don't know who you are necessarily, and I definitely don't know your email. So we have sent around a list of those that registered either online for the virtual training and or in-person training or registered for the conference. Please check or initial by your name and make sure that the email address, I'm pretty sure it's okay. But it'd be good to just check it so that we can ensure that you get your lovely, frameable, it put on your wall certificate of attending today's training. So again, thank you so much for attending. This is our second. I'm going to stay off the side and I'm blocking the folks as much as possible. This is our second hybrid meeting. And so as you can tell, we are still learning the technology, so forgive us for that. Hopefully, we will be much smoother in years to come. So we always want to make sure that we get more in-person as possible. Yet it's a long distance. We know from, it's not Texas, but it's still a long distance from one place, one part of the state to the others. And we appreciate everyone coming here. So just for the purposes of. Sure, I'm active. I am active. Welcome again. This Planet Commissioner Training, we have, we are one of nine in the country that actually requires Planet Commissioner and Board of Appeals training. And so this course has been set up by the Department of Planning in collaboration with the Maryland Planet Commissioners Association. We do these trainings at Mako, MML, and PCA conferences. And if your jurisdiction gets enough people together, we'll go out and meet with you and gladly do this. So we just need to have advanced notes with respect to that. So we encourage this training. This is not mandatory training taking this course. Local governments can actually do the training on their own. The state law does say that within six months of being appointed to a Planet Commission or Board of Appeals, those members are supposed to take the training. It does not affect about validity of any of your actions during those times or even after. Nevertheless, we encourage you to take the training and thank you for being here today. So for those that are online, as I said, someone has already helped me out in terms of saying you can hear me. There is a question bar on the side of your go-to webinar application. And please use that to ask questions. We will have strategic places along here that we're going to stop. We're going to look and see if there's any questions online. And we're going to obviously ask for your questions along the way in the audience. So again, thank you so much for that. Again, Planet Commissioner Training, it applies to all charter and non-charter. And we're going to mention that many times. Are you a charter community or county or a non-charter county? Municipalities and non-charter are governed differently than charter counties. It also, in the case of Montgomery and Prince George's, they have their own set of rules in the Land use article beyond just the normal stuff. So again, individual members of Planet Commission, Board of Appeals, welcome. So we actually have this training online. If you, since you're taking it here, you don't have to take it. But if you want to get a more in-depth perspective of Planet Commissioner Training, we actually have an online course. We have a lot of training opportunities on the planning.maryland.gov site. There are a number of what are called models and guidelines. There's a whole series of other educational resources. And encourage you to have conversations with our regional planners. And if we don't have something there, we offer up our research capabilities to assist you when you have a tough planning and zoning or redevelopment questions you might have. Again, you'll be getting a certificate based upon wherever that email address is. And make sure that you have that. And again, the list is around here. Please, at one point during between now and noon time, just make sure that you've checked off that you are here so that you can get credit. Hopefully, this is painless. Again, thank you. First, thank you for your service as Planet Commissioner and Board of Appeals members. We really appreciate your service to your communities. And we thank you for being here today. We have our speakers today. Again, my name is Chuck Boyd. We have Joe Griffiths, who's going to be doing our first and third section of modules. And we have, we are really lucky to have Adam Snyder, who is our counsel for the Department of Planning. He will be covering the delete, the law and ethics and the Board of Appeals procedure process. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Joe.
Hey Chuck. Since we're a little behind, and I know Adam's legal section is always the most popular section, I'm going to move through mine fairly quickly. But we, you got, obviously, before anything else, you need to know about the foundations of planning. I'm on the right side here. Okay. So Maryland has always been a magnet for growth, you know, proximity to the nation's capital along the eastern seaboard, 95, has mountains, beaches, you know, American miniature. So planning has always been a key component in Maryland and something in many respects just a necessity. So, I mean, we all know that Maryland's fairly small in stature compared to, size-wise, to other states. But only 18 states have more people. So we're the fifth densest state in the nation. When you have that much density, obviously, you have to consider how you're managing your land, your resources, amenities effectively. So another reason, you know, with this magnet for growth, its density has made Maryland focus heavily on planning. So we're going to talk throughout this class about planning Maryland, its long history. And in many respects, its proactive approach to planning. And, you know, when I was in, when I was in planning school, we definitely learned about things that were going on in Maryland as examples. All right. So Maryland planners help determine the efficient use of land for homes, stores, jobs, schools, and services, and also protect natural resources. So I'd like to start by asking you all, when we say natural resources or any kind of resources, what are we talking about? What do planners protect? Water, all right? Yeah. I mean, Maryland's surrounded by that. Land, what kind of land? Okay. Forest land, farmland, right? Some of it's agricultural land, productive land, some of it's more natural land. Absolutely. All right. All right, here we go. Agricultural preservation. So these are what you're going to, what you're seeing here highlighted are priority preservation areas, which is a unique statewide designation for land that contains productive agricultural or forest soils, some of the things we just talked about, and supports profitable agricultural enterprises. The, this right here, the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, as when you say out the acronym, it sounds funny with MELP. But it was established in 1997, and they purchased agricultural preservation easements. So it conserves that land and the farmland for farming, but also forest land for forests. And then there's also Rural Legacy Program, right? And MDP, Maryland Department of Planning, if I use that acronym a couple of times today, that's what I'm referring to. We sit on the Rural Legacy Board. And the Rural Legacy, which is through the Department of Natural Resources, provides funding to preserve large continuous tracts of land to enhance natural resources, agricultural, forestry, and environmental protection. All right. And then it also supports that land base for natural land industries, right? Because, you know, just because a, because a land is preserved, doesn't mean it's not productive, right? It can either support agriculture, can support recreation, and, you know, support by supporting natural resources and natural environments, right? That has the long-term benefits. We have, this is our land preservation dashboard that is on the Maryland Department of Planning. If you're interested in the status of land preservation, it's dynamic, it's constantly updated. And you can access tabular data that informs the dashboard and access available spatial data in the form of GIS. So as I mentioned, it's constantly updated. You can see, you know, I was talking about MELP, Rural Legacy. And then you can see where they are around the state. So again, with such a high-dense state, we saw that we're the fifth densest in the nation. We really need to, Maryland has a long history of focusing on being able to preserve its land and its other resources to make sure that that density doesn't overrun us or, you know, we lose the things that make Maryland so special. All right. Then we also focus, there's also one resource we haven't talked about yet, our historic resources, right? Historic preservation does define Maryland. The Maryland Historic Trust is a part of the Maryland Department of Planning. They're based down in Brownsville. And they've been a part of us since 2005. The trust focuses on identification, protection, and enhancement of heritage resources in the state. And they're also responsible for undertaking the survey and documentation of both architectural and archaeological resources. They have, they both have, you know, they follow certain regulations, have regulations at federal and the state level, Section 106 review to make sure that resources are being documented, preserved. But they also have archaeological resources. They have the Jefferson Patterson Park Museum down in southern Maryland. So they have an active role as, you know, Maryland being, you know, such an old, older colony and state has so many resources. All right. So there's some other examples. So we looked earlier at agricultural easements or other conservation easements. There are also historic preservation easements. They will provide technical assistance for historic preservation commissions. Is anybody here on a historic preservation commission? Sometimes they have different names, but they often play a similar role to planning commissions, but it's focused on historic preservation. Okay. And then they also have a state historic preservation plan called Preserve Maryland. All right. Let's keep moving here. All right. So I have a question here. What are some of the things that planners need to do to ensure a future of good planning? I'm sorry? Plan often, how you doing, Lisa? What do you mean by often?
At least by, like, some direction or even more, like, regular.
Okay. Absolutely. So yeah, we make these long-range plans, right? And so it's not like we just like clap our hands, all right, we're good. Good, we got it all planned out. You definitely have to revisit it, regular monitoring. We're going to talk about that later on today. Give me one more thing that planners need to do to ensure a future of good planning. Got something for me, Chuck? Hmm, thank you. Have they never been seeing it? You can go to the audience view, upper right-hand corner. Okay. All right. I'm going to keep moving because I know we do. I think, thank you for John. All right. So this is pretty poignant since, well, I won't, I won't give it away. So we always have this slide in here, try to guess which this location is. You got London, Copenhagen, Venice. All right. All right. He's raising his hand. He wanted to do it correctly. It's right, right, right? And if you're going on the tour this afternoon, you will see that. We'll be taking a tour of Carroll Creek. So, all right. Okay. So we'll look a little bit about the history here. Some people that you'll, if you, if you take planning in school, try to get the AICP certification, you'll definitely get to learn these folks. So in 1916, New York City adopted the first comprehensive zoning regulations to apply citywide. And these regulated height, bulk, and use. Then there was the Standard Zoning Enabling Act in 1922. This was under then Department of Commerce head Hoover, who later became president. They also did the Standard Planning Enabling Act to, as a way to help states that wanted to codify planning and zoning in their, in their states. So and then there's Daniel Burnham, this guy right here, very famous planners, particularly in Chicago and DC, doing the Columbia Exhibition in 1893 and what they called White, the White City. I think it was the same year. Edmund Bacon advanced redevelopment of Philadelphia and has long stood as a planning director. These are very famous folks. And they said, make no, or Daniel Burnham said, make no small plans. Different style of planning back then, often very grand. But, you know, still, still key in the evolution. All right. So the history, you know, there was a lot, a lot of history there. You're going to learn a lot about the history of zoning law from Adam here. But history is not, the history of planning is not one of unchecked progress. You know, following World War II, planners and civic leaders throughout the country initiated a concept known as urban renewal, which aimed to clear and develop, redevelop slums in the name of civic and economic process of progress, often with the support of federal funding. However, this often targeted working class and predominantly minority resident neighborhoods, which were often vibrant, culturally rich, but not what the city leaders considered what they were looking for in their communities and their city, and that they considered them as getting in the way of progress. So little concern was given to the opinion of the existing residents. And freeways and large economic development projects often destroyed existing communities and displaced millions against their wills. And I was talking earlier about make no small plans. This was Burnham's make no small plans taken to extreme. One person who pushed back here is, okay. One person who pushed back is Jane Jacobs, author of Death and Life of Great American City. This is a very famous book in planning circles and schools. You'll definitely read it if you're in school. She rose to prominence when Robert Moses, who was a powerful New York City official and definitely somebody who would make no small plans, attempted to extend Fifth Avenue directly through Washington Square Park. She organized a stiff community-based resistance, and Moses eventually scrapped his plans. In Death and Life, Jacobs contended that cities were complex systems, that they should be filled with people, and the density was good. And a lot of what you hear about Jane Jacobs is eyes on the street. More people on the street, more activity is good for communities and for planning. All right. So why plan? Guide land use, you know, where certain land uses go. You need to make sure you have infrastructure that supports that land use. As we discussed earlier, protecting natural resources, encouraging and supporting economic development, and providing equitable access to resources. All right. All right. Well, this is, you know, the role planning is to understand, know, gauge, and listen. This is something we're going to continue to work on to talk about today and throughout the rest of the next two days. Okay. So just as we saw earlier with urban renewal, there's a unfortunate history of planning for inequity. We're going to talk about planning for equity next. Going back even further than urban renewal with the sport of new deal policies, planning and planners also contributed to racial segregation and social injustice. In the 30s, the Federal Homeowners Loan Corporation created red line maps. You can see Baltimore is one of the first cities to adopt these. These areas are shown in red, and they're predominantly African-American neighborhoods, which were labeled hazardous. And mortgage lenders and appraisers denied services, loans, and capital investments within the red line. The New Deal's Federal Housing Administration basically contributed to this as well, denied minority households' access to federally backed mortgage loans. You compare these red line maps, not just in Baltimore, but around the country, to areas of disinvestment and areas in need of reinvestment today. They very closely align. So there's this long through line here. Restrictive covenants prevented black families from purchasing homes within certain neighborhoods. Exclusionary zoning, which has large lots and lack of diversity and home size, lot sizes tends to keep people that can't, might not be able to afford such large properties out. And then this idea of capital disinvestment. If you look throughout our history, looking at where just infrastructure investment, other capital investment has been focused, it has been tend to focus in wealthier, whiter neighborhoods in America. All right. But there is a long, there's a strong trend, there's a strong movement now for planning for equity. And the first step is really understanding and acknowledging our history. And you'll see some of that in the urban renewal. You'll see in red line, capital investment, things I was just talking about. A lot of it is, you know, really engaging with communities that may have been disenfranchised and planning might not have supported over the years. And, you know, as planners, you're often going to have to hear some things you don't want to hear. Question? Go ahead. Sure. Well, okay. Yes. So, I mean, I think a lot, and we, it's a good, it's a good thing to ask or to ask. And I might go through some of the other stuff as part of this. So, you know, the classic, or the, consider equity, it's, it goes beyond just equality, right? So equality is everybody has, you know, the exact same opportunity. Whereas equity be, okay, we could see what our history has done. Like the specific government decisions have made certain communities and certain neighborhoods has put them at advantage. So the government has chosen to put certain, over the decades, to put certain communities at a disadvantage. So therefore, they're starting from a different place now in planning. So if we now were to say, okay, everybody, we're going to plan equally for all communities. If there, even if there's advancements, you know, there's still, because that certain community, certain areas started off at a disadvantage because of government policies, that they're, it's not going to equal out. So that equality doesn't really hit the, doesn't really address the inequality that was created earlier. So that would be, so if governments made specific decisions to not invest in infrastructure in certain communities in the past, they would make certain decisions now to reinvest in those communities. Because over the past decades, that reinvestment wasn't there. I mean, that's, that's a political call that I wouldn't, I don't know if I could say it has or hasn't. I would say that if you look at areas of, you know, areas of disinvestment in our communities, I wouldn't, I would say there's still that long through line that we've seen where those areas are still have that, they have low, what they might call disadvantaged communities or underserved communities. They still have, you know, low, lower educational outcomes, lower health outcomes, lower wealth outcomes than, than other communities. So, yes. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, this is, there's, there's a lot of work going on in this area, and there's still a lot of things to be learned, what's effective. But I, I don't know if you've ever seen the image of, it's a cartoon, like, like they have three kids trying to watch a sport, sporting event. And so a lot of you have probably seen this. And there's three kids, one of them's really shorter than the other ones. And they have equal platforms and that they're standing on. So the two taller kids can see the game. The shorter kid, because it's on an equal platform, can't see the game over the, can't see over the fence. That's, and the image says equality, right? So, yeah, they all have the same platform, but obviously, this one's a lot shorter. So they can't see the, they can't see the game. And then they have, then it has an image of equity where the shorter child has a larger platform so they can see the game. I mean, that's obviously oversimplified, but that's kind of, I think it does, is a good way to start thinking about what the difference are. All right. I know I'm a little behind here. We'll have plenty more time to talk about this topic today, tomorrow, and in the years to come. And I know I'm way behind here. So, all right, let's see here. All right. Maryland has the, the state of Maryland has the authority for planning and zoning, but has delegated to local jurisdictions. And Adam's going to talk a lot about this. There are, the land use article used to be 66B is where you'll find a lot of the provisions and requirements for, and statutes for, for planning. Division one is the majority of municipalities, counties in the state. And then Division two is Montgomery and Prince George's Counties. Charter and code, charter or code counties in non-charter counties have different requirements. I'm not going to go over all of them here, but you can see the non-charter counties here in blue, and then charter counties in yellow, green. Charter counties, they have to abide by their own charters that they create when they become charter counties. But they're still all subject to the land use article. So here's some famous planning milestones. Euclid versus Ambler, you'll learn more from Adam as well. Very famous one that kind of established the legality of zoning. I'm sure I'm oversimplifying that, Adam. And then what you'll hear a lot, this idea of Euclidean zoning, the strict separation of uses. So you have commercial uses here, residential uses here, other uses there. Euclidean, it's kind of across, it's like horizontal. And then, you know, there's been an effort over the past 20, 30 years to get beyond Euclidean zoning, allow more integrated uses, mixed-use vertical uses. So here's some state planning milestones. As I mentioned, that Maryland has a long history of good planning. So established the first State Planning Commission in 1933. Our department was established in 1959. It's been called the Office of Planning for many years as well. State Land Use Act, a big one, is this Smart Growth Areas Act establishing PFAs, which we're going to talk about here in a second, and the Sustainable Communities Act. Many of you probably have sustainable communities in your areas. All right. So priority funding areas, PFAs, important thing to know. So the idea is to focus and make efficient use of Maryland taxpayer funding in certain areas and to focus on preserving and maintaining existing areas, develop, focusing growth there so we can preserve farms and the natural resources we talked about earlier. So we had priority preservation areas earlier. These are kind of, they're not the opposite. They work in tandem, but they are distinctly different where this is where we want infrastructure and state funding to go. In 1997, municipal boundaries, if it was incorporated town in 1997, it automatically, everything inside of that boundary became PFA. And a lot of people still think that's the case if there's annexation. But it's not, that law changed. So an annexation doesn't automatically become a PFA. that law changed, so an annexation doesn't automatically become a PFA. It can become a PFA as part of the annexation process, we, the Maryland Department of Planning will look at it, review it for PFA eligibility, but it's not, no longer the case that they're automatically PFA. But anything in 1997 was. So the main things about PFAs, they need to have existing or planned water sewer service, and if it's zoned for residential, it needs to have a residential density of 3.5 units per acre, or it can be zoned for commercial employment. And it needs to, and then it also needs to be in a growth area, locally designated growth area. There's a lot of gray area in these, they seem pretty straightforward, they're not always that straightforward, but PFAs are locally designated, and the Maryland Department of Planning concurs or not. If we don't concur, we'll put a comment on it, a PFA comment according to the law. So here's an example of residential parcels developed from 1998 to 2018. These are parcels, and you'll see that 71% of parcels in that time are inside of PFAs, but the actual acres of development outside of PFAs was 74.9. So why are those so off? Why are there so many parcels developed inside of PFAs in the, in these 20 years, but so many more acres outside of PFAs? So fewer parcels outside of PFAs. This is just the number of parcels and this is the number of acres. I'm sorry? Okay, and what is, what do those parcels look like in compressed city areas? They're smaller, right? Yeah, yeah, so that density means like you smaller parcels, smaller units often, so that's why there's so many more developed, that's why there's so many parcels, because they're just smaller, there can't be more of them inside of PFAs. All right, um, so Maryland's economy, we continue to get new jobs, movement of jobs outside of urban communities contributes to the decline in established cities and towns, so that I, you know, what we're always working on and what, you know, Department of Commerce and others focus on, trying to bring jobs back to the PFA areas, existing communities. Yes, it would be in a comprehensive plan, correct, yes, that would be where, that's, that's where it would be designated. So if you think about it, like the, the PFA, it's an oversimplification, but these three, three key documents for PFA can make something a PFA, you know, it needs to be designated for growth area and the master plan or comprehensive plan, that's a comp plan, it needs to have certain zoning or density, and that's the zone, that's the zoning ordinance. And then the water and sewer plan is like the, you know, that's a infrastructure plan. Chuck? Oh, oh, sorry, so, so the question was, what, how does it considered, thanks Chuck, how do you, what's considered within a locally designated growth area for purposes of PFA, and that is comprehensive plans or master plans? Yeah, so an actual requirement of municipal comp plans, if they want to annex land, is they have a municipal growth element or municipal growth area. So we look at that when there's an annexation, we say, all right, is this, is this municipal comp plan, sometimes they have to, sometimes they can map it, sometimes they can talk about a parcel that they want to annex, and that is an indication that it's in their growth area. So that, yep. Yes, yes. Absolutely, absolutely, yep. Oh, yeah. So the question was about how a municipality defines a growth area, and the response would be, they're required to do municipal growth element in their comprehensive plans that indicates areas that they would like to annex and grow into. And that is a requirement both of the annexation, but it would also be a requirement of becoming a PFA upon annexation, because we'd meet that PFA requirement. All right, I'm almost done here. So you can see how fewer acres for residential, you know, Maryland was faster growing from 1998 to 2008, but you'll see, still, even with that, you'll see how fewer acres for residential development have been consumed since 2009. And, you know, it's hard to say if that's completely attributable to PFAs, probably not, if there's a lot of factors there, but definitely Maryland's planning has focused on that idea of consuming less land, preserving more resources for residential development. All right, so I know we had some choppy waters there for technology, I apologize, and I know we're a little bit behind schedule, but we'll look through these real quick. So true or false, Maryland is the fifth most densely populated state? Hopefully I win all these questions, too. All right, so by 2040, Maryland is expected to grow by? Is this the all of the above? I might have skipped. I think it's all, I know, it, yeah, Chuck said it up that way. I think we skipped over some of these other ones because I was behind, but we definitely talked about it, so it's all the above. All right, there you go, give you the key there, all the above. So where do Maryland jurisdictions get their planning authority? Land use article, correct. All right, priority funding areas. A, yep, they're inside growth areas, they're actually drawn or designated locally, Maryland Department of Planning just concurs with them, certifies them, and they do not only include municipalities, they're definitely in counties as well. Yeah. Who wins? It does not become a PFA, it becomes a PFA common area. So if you look at our PFA map, you'll see, so, because the law doesn't really say what they become in that situation. The law says that they're locally designated, and if they don't meet these, those requirements I mentioned, Maryland Department of Planning comments on them. So we've kind of come up with, like, we're calling them comment areas. So for the purpose, what, what, why they exist essentially is like, we, they, it's, it says that the local community is saying that they want this to be a PFA, the local government, but there is something that it does not meet. So. Oh, yeah, okay, all right. So PFA, what is a PFA common area? The question was like, who wins, or that was the original question, but we reworded it as, and what does that mean essentially? And it means, for all intents and purposes, it's not a priority funding area, but it does help, if you look at a map and see a common area, it would at least communicate to a resident in that area, other stakeholders, that the local jurisdiction, the local government wants it to be a priority funding area, but that's something that's lacking. And then maybe if they, if they, if they were interested in becoming PFA, they could talk with their local government to find out what they could do to make it win. All right, sorry.
One question was asked, I'm going to turn my mic on, about emailing. Just a reminder, folks, make sure you have your, the signing sheet and the email address will be where we send you for those that are online. I'm looking for two and a half hours of participation online, because I look at those hours or, or half hours, so again, as long as you're online with us for two and a half hours, we will be working with you. So without further ado, I think we're going to move forward with, Adam is the next one.
Was there no questions online?
I didn't see any questions online.
I'm going to double check the other room.
So, so, and without further ado, Adam Snyder, our counsel for the Department of Planning.
All right, thanks everyone for your patience while we work out these little snafus. I'm going to be covering a wide number of topics here, starting with the legal authority for planning and zoning, kind of that constitutional underpinnings of it and limitations on planning and zoning authority, then talking a little bit about planning and zoning in Maryland, different types of zoning actions, what are the limits of using those? And then I'm going to go on and talk a little bit about government ethics, I'm sure everyone's favorite part of this program. I'm going to start off by asking, has anyone ever heard of the 10th Amendment before? You know, it's not one of your, it's not one of your household amendments, you know, the first or the second or anything like that, or even the fifth, taking the fifth, we all know about that. The 10th Amendment, though, is probably the most important for planning and zoning because it's this, it is the source of local zoning power. And what the 10th Amendment does is draw the boundaries between what the federal government can do and what states and localities can do. And it reserves the police powers, power, you know, police authority, public health authority to the states and localities. You think about how this plays out in practice, we have local and state police forces, we don't have a federal police force, we have the FBI, but they're not patrolling the streets. The police is a state and local authority, same way with public health. When we've gone through the COVID pandemic, it was the states that were imposing, you know, restrictions on gatherings and what have you, the federal government didn't have that authority. And that all flows from the 10th Amendment. Now that's important because one exercise of police power is the zoning power. And this can be traced back to the Euclid case from 1926. This was a situation where a town in Ohio was, you know, trying to say, well, we're going to divide up the area within our town, there'll be residential areas here, industrial areas here, what have you. And someone who was zoned in a residential area said, well, hey, I want to, I want to run a factory, I want to build a factory here, and you can't tell me what I, you know, what I can do with my property. Challenged it all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court upheld the state and local land use authority as a reasonable exercise of the state's police powers. Now, the court was clear, though, in saying that that doesn't mean that every site-specific application of zoning authority is constitutionally permissible, just that it is permissible for states and localities to zone and plan for development within their boundaries. Now, this is where we get into the big limitation on planning and zoning authority and things like how those authorities are implemented with respect to specific properties. And that's the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment. Now you see the text of it there on your screen, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." Really short clause, but more than half of those words are the subject of dozens of Supreme Court decisions. This is a heavily litigated area of the law that has very few bright lines. It's really difficult to know what it means to have property taken without just compensation. Now, there's lots of issues here, as you can tell from the blue highlighting, we're not going to talk about just compensation, what constitutes that, we're not going to talk about what qualifies as private property for purposes of the takings clause, we're going to focus on what constitutes a taking and what is a public use. Now, there are three forms of takings, there's just garden, eminent domain, that's where the government says, I'm taking your backyard to put a road through. We all know that, they got to pay you for it, but the government can do that. Then there's regulatory takings, as its name suggests, that's where the government regulates property to the point that it's been deemed a confiscation, and the government has to pay for it. And there are also certain types of exactions that come up in the land use process that we're going to cover here as well. Like I said, you're familiar with eminent domain, roads, parks, other things like that, you're probably not going to have to deal with that so much as a planning commissioner, that's really what, you know, the state highway administration does, maybe your local Department of Public Works might have some experience with that, but I don't think it'll really come up in your world very frequently. One thing that does, though, come up is what is a public purpose? Now, there are, for the, in the planning and zoning area, the two biggest cases deal with urban renewal type projects. So in 1954, the Supreme Court made clear in the Berman v. Parker case, that if you've got a blighted area that's, you know, lots of crime, lots of dilapidated houses, there are fire risks, what have you, that it is a public use to take all those properties, you know, confiscate them and raise them and put in some other, you know, municipal project that will eliminate the blight and presumably advance, you know, the municipality's goals. Then, about 15 years ago, the Supreme Court took another step by saying it doesn't even have to be blighted property. Even if the properties are fine, the government can still take them if they want to turn those properties to a more productive economic use. So you, the, the case involved some residential houses in a town in Connecticut that were along or close to the waterfront, and the government, the town wanted to create a big kind of economic commercial center, mixed use, but these houses were in the way, the proverbial person who refuses to sell to the government. And they took Ms. Kallo's house, and it was challenged up to the Supreme Court, and the court held that, that that type of urban renewal, even if it's not blighted, is a public use, because it increases the tax base and increases the amenities available in the municipality, all of that is a public use. Warning, my guess is that if a similar issue were to come up before this court, they would come out the other way. So this is kind of the high watermark of most deferential case when it comes to defining what is a public use. I think that'll probably be rolled back a little bit in the future. Now, the, the real thing, the most important thing for all, all of you, when you're talking about planning and zoning authority, is what constitutes a taking? Now, and what constitutes a regular, regulatory taking? As the slide shows, this type of taking was virtually unheard of when the nation was created and for like the first 150 years thereafter. And why is that? It's because when we first were starting out as a country, there wasn't an awful lot of government regulation. What there was, was to really stop a, a really bad health outbreak, or to maybe knock down someone's house when there was a fire coming along and they had to create a fire break. There wasn't a lot of environmental regulation, it wasn't a lot of land use regulation, wasn't a lot of economic regulation. So regulatory takings as a concept just didn't exist. It was first recognized in 1922 in the Pennsylvania coal case. And the court there, this is a case involving a Pennsylvania rule that said you had to leave coal in place underground, even if you owned it, if it would result in subsidence on the surface, subsidence on a residential property. And it, it went up to the Supreme Court with the coal company saying, hey, we own this coal and your, this locality is telling us, we cannot mine that coal. The court ruled in favor of the coal company. And it made the point, you know, and during the case, the government said, well, wait a minute, this is, this is just a core exercise of our police power, we've always regulated in favor of the public health and public safety, well, people's houses might fall into the ground. And the government, and the Supreme Court said that, basically, the problem is, is that the concept of police power is too flexible, it covers too many things. And the quote here is, "The natural tendency of human nature would be to extend the qualification that it qualifies as a police power more and more until at last, private property disappeared." So the Supreme Court is saying here, it's no longer good enough, government, to come in here and say, we're exercising our police powers, therefore there can't be a taking. The, the court is now going to start saying, okay, when you're regulating property, we're going to look at it and see whether it constitutes a taking, even if you're not. we're going to look at it and see whether it constitutes a taking, even if you're not confiscating the property outright. Now, the question is, how do you define a regulatory taking? The courts shot at it in nineteen twenty two was this, while private property may be regulated to a certain extent, if regulation goes too far, it will be recognized as a taking. That's it. Now, that's not really a standard at all. Question in the back? Oh, yeah, okay. So it's not really a workable standard, the question then becomes, how far is too far? That question was decided in nineteen seventy eight, a case involving a, a proposal to build on top of Grand Central Station in New York City that was denied on the grounds that it would compromise the air rights of the surrounding properties. The property owner sued, it went up to the Supreme Court and the court tried to, you know, articulate, what does it mean to go too far? And they started applying this ad hoc multi-factor test that looks at the economic effect. That should be an E in effect, economic effect of the government action, reasonable investment-backed expectations and the character of the government action, what those mean are economic effect of the government action, how does it really affect property values? Is your, is it rendered valueless or is it just a slight inconvenience? Reasonable investment-backed expectations. Did you buy the property knowing that this restriction would be applied to you and so you bought it at a discount? Well, then you wouldn't have a reasonable investment-backed expectation, but if you paid full price for this property and this restriction on your ability to development comes out of the blue, well, then you do have a reasonable investment-backed expectation. And the character of the government action is a kind of a loosey-goosey thing that really comes down to, what does it look like? Is it, is this government regulating for public health and safety or is it government really trying to get you to give them something without you having, or without them having to pay for it? Now, this proved to be a very difficult standard in two ways, first, it was, there was no bright line rule. This ad hoc test, you could rarely tell in advance how it was going to come out and it was not particularly favorable to land owners. So the Supreme Court created two what are called per se or categorical takings. And these are important for you, the second one more than the first. The first one, though, is the Loretto case, and this stands for the proposition that when the government regulation constitutes a physical taking, then it's an automatic taking, you don't have to look at any of the factors, the government has to pay compensation. The specific example in this case was New York City required owners of apartment buildings to put cable boxes on the side of their building in order to provide cable service, not only to that apartment building, but it was part of a network to go throughout the city so that residents could get cable service. But they required, it was like a three foot by three foot box on the side of the apartment building. That constitutes a taking because it is the government saying, you have to let someone else use that piece of your property, you can't use it anymore, that box is there. Now, the compensation is going to be small, but it is a taking, and if you've got all these apartment buildings that have these boxes, well, the compensation adds up. But again, I, you know, that's probably not going to come up much in the land use context. This one is the one that comes up all the time. The Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal Commission case, taking occurs when a regulation denies a landowner of all economically viable use of land. Now, this case arose from a gentleman who owned a beachfront property in, I think it was Isle of Palms, South Carolina. And South Carolina enacted an ordinance to prohibit development waterward of literally a line in the sand. And the, the, the purpose of it was to protect the island from hurricanes and protect the dunes that also protect against hurricanes. So it was an effort to preserve the natural ability of the beach to absorb the impact of hurricanes. But Mr. Lucas's lot lay waterward of that line in the sand, so all of a sudden he was not able to build on his property. The two lots on either side of him had been developed prior to the law was enacted. So he, there he was with an empty unbuildable lot with two big time multimillion dollar houses on either side of him. And he went up to the Supreme Court and the court ruled that it was a taking because it denied him all economically viable use of the land. The court said, well, yeah, sure, he could camp on it. Yeah, he could put a chair on there and look at the beach, oh, that's good, but that's not economically viable use. Now, as it's been applied over the years, it means both economically viable use or all value, but it has to be all. So a diminution of value by itself is not enough, and I'm talking about in order to establish a taking in this area, you have to show like ninety five percent diminution of value. If it's eighty, eighty percent, you're probably not going to win. So it, it's, it is an extreme case, but if you fall into that category, it will constitute a taking no matter what, and people, takings plaintiffs will do everything they can to try to fit their case into one of those two categories, as a physical taking or a categorical taking. Question in the back? Yes, the question was, who sets the value when you're determining what the diminution of value is, the owner or the taker? That is heavily litigated, I mean, both sides come in with experts to value the property both before the restriction and after the restriction. And the court has to decide which one they, the court thinks is most, you know, most appropriate. Arguably, yes, but if you're the property owner, you probably don't want the government to be the one defining what your property is worth. Yeah, so you want to be there in court with your expert saying, you know, it's worth a million dollars, not a half a million dollars. Yeah. I, I think that's a fair point. Question? It, it is, it is fair. It, it is fair market value, but experts can disagree a fair bit about what fair market value is, there's also a lot of questions about what assumptions that go into the determination of fair market value. Are you looking at, I want to build a, you know, a high-rise hotel here versus I want to buy, build a residence? Are you entitled to base your value on the highest and best use? Or something less than that? And lawyers and experts fight over that issue all the time. And, you know, there's, again, the theme in takings litigation is that there aren't any bright line rules, there's no way you can just kind of go to a book and say, yeah, that's the value of this property. Another question? The question was, have, and I'm going to try to wildly simplify this, have I ever seen a situation where there was a taking arise, arose as a result of the extension of local restrictions on wellheads? Of, of land to create wellhead area? Yeah. I mean, if, I mean, if you're talking about, and maybe I'm not getting the question here, are you talking about acquiring, acquiring land in order to have a, a wellhead? Yeah, I mean, whenever you're acquiring land, you have to pay for that. Where, where you get takings in this context with some frequency, maybe not frequency, but it, it happens where the government denies, say, a building permit for a lot because it is only eligible for onsite septic and, or not, not onsite septic. Well, actually, yes, onsite septic, or if there's no water available on the property. Let me back up, I am talking about septic here, so maybe it's not responsive to your question. So I, to, to go back to your question, yes, if you're going to acquire property, you have to pay for it, but I'm not sure if just extending out land use designations in order to preserve the natural state of area around wellheads so that, you know, that, you know, you get clean water coming out of those wellheads, that can constitute a taking if someone is deprived of all economically viable use, but not otherwise, but maybe we can talk about that afterwards, I think I'm not quite getting your question. Well, the, the follow-up question is, what happens if, if the locality needs to spray irrigate in order to dispose of, you know, sewer effluent? Yeah, and if, and if you're spray irrigating private property, sure, that is going to constitute a taking. Or you can acquire the property and spray irrigate, but you can also get, you know, work it out with a landowner and pay them a certain amount of money to allow their property to be spray irrigated, that happens. You have to, I mean, you have to work things out with MDE as well, they're active in the spray irrigation world, but whenever you're, the government is doing anything on private property, putting anything on it or acquiring that property, they're going to have to pay for that. What we're talking about here is regulating where the government is not really putting a finger on your property at all. It's just telling them, telling you what you can do with your property. That's where you get a regulatory taking. Do you have a question or? There are federal statutes that have been enacted to allow someone to seek their legal fees when their federal constitutional rights have been violated, and this would constitute a, a violation of their rights under the Fifth Amendment, which is that their property shall not be taken without all right. So now, as I, I finished up in the last slide by saying that people try really hard to fit themselves into either of these takings categories. That leads us to a discussion of partial takings. Now, this is, imagine this hypothetical, you've got a hundred acre parcel and twenty acres of it is wetlands. And the Department of the Environment says, you can't build on those twenty acres. So you then say, all right, I'm going to bring a takings claim and say that you took the entirety of that twenty acre corner of my property. And so it is a total take because it's got no value, I can't do anything with it. The courts say, no, what they look at is the entire parcel as a whole and not just the little bit that is restricted by the governmental regulation. So in that circumstance, you'd have a hundred acres, twenty acres are unbuildable, you'd only have, suffer about a twenty percent diminution of value and therefore you would not have a taking. Now, so because those categorical takings boxes are hard to get into, most cases are still determined by that Penn Central ad hoc multi-factor balancing test that's pretty favorable to the government. And also very difficult to predict going in. All right, I want to move on to exactions, which is also a form of taking, but a little bit different. An exaction is an affirmative condition placed on the receipt of a permit or a special exception or other type of land use authorization and can amount to a taking in certain conditions. There are two requirements that flow out of two Supreme Court cases. One is that there be a rational nexus between the governmental restriction and the government, and the private project and that there be rough proportionality between the impact of that project and the burden placed by the governmental restriction. The first case is Nolan versus California Coastal Commission, as you can see on the slide here. The Nolans owned a piece of property that lay between, along a beach and they wanted to expand it. California said, well, we're concerned that if you expand your house, people going down the street are not going to be able to see that there's a beach there. They're not going to be able to know that there's a place of, you know, they could go down, enjoy the water and what have you. And so they imposed a condition on the, on the permit that would allow them to build the property. And that condition required that the Nolans allow people to traverse on their portion of the beach back and forth. So in this instance, the court struck that down because the court said, hey, the, the concern you have, government, is about blocking the public's view of the beach. But the condition you're imposing is down on the beach itself, it has nothing to do with people walking down the road and knowing that there's a beach over there. So the court concluded that there was no rational nexus, those are just two different things. You're essentially using the permit requirement to exact this other concession from the property owner. The next, well, we've already done that. The next case is the Dolan versus City of Tegard case, and this is the one that established the rough proportionality requirement, it, it was someone who was expanding a store and the expansion was going to have some impact on storm, the flow of stormwater on, on the parcel. So the government required them to do some onsite stormwater mitigation, you know, stuff that we see all the time in the development world. And required them to dedicate part, another parcel of property that they had to create a public greenway that could also handle stormwater during flood events. So both of them were designed to help with stormwater and offset the impact that the development would have. The court struck that down too on the grounds that, well, you're already doing onsite stormwater mitigation. This other requiring them to dedicate a, a different property to public use for a greenway, yes, it does improve stormwater management, but it's going way, 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 way beyond the impact of this particular project. So the court said that that was not, you know, roughly proximate or proportional to the impact of the project itself and struck it down. Now, this does not apply to, you know, general, you know, tax and impact fee structures, things that legislative action, it, we're talking about property-specific impositions, almost property specific impositions almost always as conditions to a building permit, a subdivision permit, something like that, that is property specific. All right, that's the takings clause and its exactions relative. And I want to move on, say, a couple of words about equal protection. This one you might be familiar with. It's the constitutional provision, the Fourteenth Amendment, that lay behind the Brown v Board of Education decision in nineteen fifty four, which barred segregated education throughout the country. Now, what the equal protection clause says is that you cannot treat similar similarly situated proper properties differently. Or people differently. So the 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 challenge in the land use context is that basically all you're doing is classifying property. You're distinguishing property all the time. You're drawing lines and saying this is going to be a residential area. This is going to be an industrial area. That type of classification immediately raises equal protection concerns because a landowner can say, hey, we're both landowners. You're telling me I have to build a residence. You're telling this other person over here that they can build a Walmart. Now, that's not fair. You're not regular regulating equally. Now, that turns out not to be a problem for land use because the Supreme Court has developed a very deferential body of law in this area, and it provides that so long as you are not classifying based on race or gender or religion or something that is a suspect class. Or not just not classifying based on the exercise of a fundamental right, like, you know, you're a Republican, so you can build one house on your lot, Democrats can build ten. I mean, that you couldn't do that. When you, when a government tries to distinguish based on suspect class or on the exercise of a fundamental right, the court applies a a strict scrutiny standard that is nearly always fatal. But if you're regulating just because this, we think the impacts of industry is different from the impact of residents. Common sense thing, as long as that has a rational basis, you're going to be fine. And so almost all land use and planning decisions is going to have a rational basis. Because you're distinguishing between different uses because of their impact on the surrounding area. So that is typically going to be upheld. You only get into trouble when you start kind of straying into the the suspect class area. And that's what I was going to say there. So now let's, we're going to move on and talk about planning and zoning in Maryland. Does anyone have any questions about the taking stuff before or the constitutional stuff before we move on? Yes. It it should be the same. It's going to be, it's going to be what they call a just compensation. And but again, that is heavily litigated as to what that means. Usually it's, I mean, it should be fair market value. But again, the the two sides will fight tooth and nail over what that fair market value is. A lot of the litigation that the State Highway Administration does in this context is our fights with the landowner over how much the state has to pay to put a road through their backyard. No question that the state can put the road there. The only question is how much they have to pay. Got a question up front? Shouldn't be, because they'd be able to develop the property with a two hundred and fifty unit apartment building. And that's going to give you some economically viable use of your property. You'd be in this diminution of value realm where they'd be saying, well, if it were not for this restriction, we would build a thousand unit apartment building. And that might be, you know, a seventy five percent reduction in the value of the property, probably not going to be enough. There's often legislative efforts in this area to define what is an actionable diminution of value for purposes of takings. None of that legislation has gotten very far here in Maryland, but they do get advanced in in some other states. Question in the back.
Just let me add.
Did I not, did I?
Keep in mind, APFOs are are intended to regulate the pace of growth, not restrict growth. So in the case of if in that that subdivision or that development you had, that they to avoid the APFO trigger, they may may choose the two hundred and fifty units. But if they wanted to build to the fullest extent and they triggered the APFO, they wanted to go to a thousand units, they could do that. But the infrastructure needs to be adequate, so they may have to wait to actually upgrade the roads or the transportation to do that. So again, the APFO doesn't preclude the development even in when it's triggered, it just means that the infrastructure needs to be planned for and installed either as part of that development or so often the issue is schools. So schools shut down areas for a while. But the state and the local government work together often to put in a new school and they redistrict to accommodate and open that area up. So it may be closed down for a period of time. But that doesn't mean it's closed down in totality. So I just wanted to draw the distinction of what the APFO does versus it doesn't do in that respect.
Yes, a question in the back? Yeah, that would, the question was, you know, how would the takings clause be implicated by the widening of I two seventy? Would it be an exercise? Would it be eminent domain or regulatory taking and exaction? You know, if if the government is widening that road and saying, we need a part of your front yard to put this road in here or the shoulder or what have you. Yeah, the the government would have to pay for that and pay fair market value, just compensation. And sometimes, I mean, oftentimes, the parties can negotiate that and reach in agreement as to what the appropriate amount is, but oftentimes not. Question in the front here? In my example, it would be correct, where you buy the hundred acres when twenty acres of it is wetlands. But for a variety of reasons, that would not be a taking. But if you, if there's a twenty acre piece of property that is entirely wetlands, okay? And you bought it, and the government said, well, you can't, you can't build on that. That's a harder question. The the Supreme Court addressed a case that's sort of like that in the mid eighties and concluded that you could bring a taking because really the person who sold you the property, you know, you presumably bought it for a discount. And the person who sold it to you is the one who's getting the short end of the stick, but it does because they presumably bought it at some point when it was not subject to the restriction, the restriction was imposed. And so the court kind of looked at landowner as a continuous thing. The landowner at some point bought this. And then the government, then the restriction was imposed, and the fact that it changed hands doesn't mean that the government is off the hook. That only applies, though, when it's a total take. If it's part of a larger property, twenty acres out of a hundred, the fact that the court is going to look at the whole one hundred acres and apply those three factors, one of them being reasonable investment back expectations. If the fact is that you bought it at a deep discount because you were aware of the wetlands in the corner, that's going to weigh heavily against you, as will the impact of the government decision on your property because of, we're only talking about twenty percent.
And you you may want to talk about, in this respect, I think there's a recent lot merger, Supreme Court decision in terms of the transfer of sale property within, actually, the family. That they knew that when they they were taking it over the property, they knew that they actually didn't have as many lots as they thought they were. And so the regulations have changed at the local level so that you needed both the lots to make a legally conforming lot. And in fact, the Supreme Court ruled in that case, they they knew when they owned the property that they really didn't have that extra value. They thought that they, oh, well, I have actually two lots on my plot. But the regulations say I have to have used both lots to make a legal lot, and they thought, oh, why, oh, no, I can sell this one. Supreme Court said, no, you knew when you bought that property that in fact there's were only two lots, that's two lots made one for for a legal lot. You didn't lose any value as a result of that case, and I can't remember the citation.
Yeah, that was the Muir case, Muir versus Wisconsin, and it was written by one of the increasingly fewer more liberal justices on the Supreme Court. Whether that decision comes out the same way now, hard to tell. Another question over here? I I mean, if we're talking about if the state wanted to do, like, when we're talking about a highway, putting in a road. Well, I mean, eminent domain doesn't affect zoning. You know, whether that project would be squared with the comprehensive plan or the local zoning requirements would be a separate issue. The taking would only arise if it, you know, surmounted, it qualified and could be built. And the and the government was moving ahead with the project and taking the property. If they can't build it as a result of zoning and planning restrictions, you you wouldn't even get to the taking. So I think that's an independent limitation on what the government could do there that wouldn't impact the takings clause. I I don't know what, the question was what happened with the Barclay Center in Brooklyn where they built the Barclay Center in the middle of a residential area? Yeah. I would assume the local government gets to change those local zoning restrictions, and my guess, and I don't know, is they probably made some change to the local zone zoning to accommodate the project before they went ahead and built it.
So we're going to make, we're going to wrap this up, and I'm I'm going to just add a little bit. Usually in redevelopment projects, particularly in big redevelopment projects, particularly ones dealing with authorities, usually particularly if, again, a federal government gets involved, usually you have a plan. So again, I don't know this particular case in this particular area, but usually you develop a plan to redevelop an area. And you identify public benefit uses, et cetera, along the way. And at one particular point in, once you have that quote plan in place, it's been going through the local process and got buy-in by planning commissions, elected officials. That plan goes into place, and then it empowers the implementation, and that part of that implementation being to say, hey, we need to get these properties under public ownership or as part of a consolidated redevelopment project. And so you do know a little bit about the future. You don't know all about that in terms of that, and that should factor in. Again, good, in fact, question then goes, how much of that redevelopment plan gets factored into the compensation for the property goes along the way? So again, that plan shouldn't be in secret so that they didn't surprise it after the fact that they owned it. It was part of the public domain and public discourse, and it should have been factored into the calculation about compensation along the way. How much it was, I can't answer that. But again, redevelopment plans don't happen in secret, and so all sides know about it through that process. We have to get moving here because we're way behind. If you want to get out by noon, so if you can wrap it up right now and move forward.
Yep. Okay, we're going to move on now to talking about planning and this is no longer working. Oh, is it quiet? Does it go into sleep mode or something? There we go. That's working. All right, the state has delegated planning and zoning authority, Joe mentioned this, to both counties and municipalities. As to counties, the how and in which statutes the state delegates planning and zoning depends on what form of government governance your locality has adopted. Charter counties and code counties, the authorities set forth a local government article, formerly Article twenty five A and twenty five B. Non-charter counties, we're talking Division One of the land use article, and Prince George's County, Prince George's and Montgomery's County, it's Division Two of the land use article. Keep in mind, though, that these divisions are not absolute. There are provisions in Division One of the land use article that apply to charter counties and to Baltimore City. And the local government article includes certain provisions that relate to municipalities as well. And it's a complicated area here. The Court of Appeals often says that the task of tracing the statutory basis for planning and zoning in Maryland is very complex, and recodification did not help at all with that. So it's important to know which form of governance your county has adopted. You've seen the slide earlier. Joe showed that the green ones are charter counties, the blue ones are commissioner counties. And when I say charter county, I mean charter and code home rule. Those are pretty much the same in terms of the scope of their local authority. They're a little bit different because basically the history was in the early twentieth century, the Constitution allowed for local governments to adopt a charter, essentially a local constitution to take over home rule powers. That proved over time to be a very onerous process, and very few counties did it. So in the nineteen sixties, the rule was changed so that you could do a workaround, effectively accomplish home rule without adopting a local constitution. And that's called code code home rule. They're kind of lumped together as charter counties because the difference here being that charter counties and code home rule counties have much greater powers to legislate and regulate in the local sphere, and the General Assembly, consequently, has much less. In commissioner counties have much less power than charter counties, and the General Assembly has more powers. All right, here, oh, question. The question is, am I aware of an instance where a county has gone charter and then gone back to commissioner? I'm not aware of an instance where that's happened. I know I would not think so. They might have to, you know, they'd have to change their constitution. It might be, again, a very laborious process, but I don't think there's a restriction on that. Here's just a list of, if you don't like looking at the map, you can look at where your county is and it'll tell you whether you're charter, code home rule and/or commissioner. All right, municipalities also have planning and zoning authority. That's in local government article, sections on the screen, and land use article, Division One. Municipal planning and zoning authority applies only within municipal boundaries. It seems reasonable, including areas that are annexed and it can't conflict with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission or the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission. Here's a map of the municipalities in Maryland, 157 of them. All counties except for two have them. Howard and Baltimore County don't have any municipalities in them. When I say municipalities, it's kind of a term of art. It's incorporated municipalities. There are unincorporated towns that don't qualify as municipalities for purposes of land use, delegation of land use. But once you incorporate as a municipality, you get that delegation of local land use powers. Now, with that delegation of authority comes certain strings. You've got to adopt a comprehensive plan. And that comprehensive plan has to be consistent or that the zoning has to be consistent with that comprehensive plan. And that plan has to implement the state's 12 planning visions, things like planning for growth areas, adequate infrastructure and environmental protection. Now zoning, some zoning basics. Zoning occurs by the enactment of an ordinance. Its purpose is to, as we talked earlier about Euclid, Euclid case and the police power underpinnings of local land use. It's to promote health and safety, safe neighborhoods, what have you, regulates density, building height and bulk. Now, there's two types of uses that are provided for in a zoning ordinance. There's uses that are by right and there are conditional uses. And we'll talk a little bit about conditional uses going forward. Comprehensive zoning is a legislative act. And what that means is the local legislative body enacts it. It's not property specific. You're not having a trial or anything like that, developing a factual record with respect to a particular property. You're just legislating throughout the jurisdiction. And because of that, courts give it an awful lot of deference. It's very difficult to challenge comprehensive zoning. Now, the requirements that do apply, though, is that it has to cover a large area, has to be the product of careful study and controls or directs all uses of land in substantially all of the jurisdiction. Again, the distinction here is between broad legislative action and narrow property specific duty. And we'll go into that a little bit more. Some zonings do, some zoning do's and don't, sorry. Spot zoning is generally not permitted. It's not always illegal, though. Now, a spot zoning, as the graphic sort of suggests, is where you're setting out to do your comprehensive zoning. You've got a district that is going to be zoned residential and you put in the middle one commercial lot or one commercial area. Well, that could be a problem if it's inconsistent, like if you put a quarry in the middle of a residential district and that would be inconsistent with residential use and it's really being done just to benefit the owner of that property, well, that's a problem. But if you put a grocery store, allow a grocery store in the middle of a residential district, that's probably going to be okay because it's not really inconsistent with the residential use around it because people need to go to the grocery store to get what they need. And it's not really being done just for the owner's private interest. That owner might be, might be interested and might get a benefit from it, but so would everyone around it. So this is just a restriction on ensuring that local zoning power is not exercised in a way to just benefit private interests as opposed to the general good. Contract zoning is always prohibited. And contract zoning is where you have an agreement outside of the public zoning process between the zoning authority and a property owner about how land is to be zoned. This is prohibited for some of these same things. It permits special privilege. Someone's got a connection that allows them to get that more favorable zoning. It disrupts the comprehensive nature of the plan and the uniformity of the zoning within the district. And as the court has said somewhat inscrutably, impermissibly derogates the exercise of the municipality's powers. What that means is contracts away the municipality's zoning powers. And that's a general principle of law that the government can't contract away its governmental powers. So contract zoning runs afoul of that as well. Question in the front? I think both, I'm not seeing a case on that, but all of the policies that lie behind it. The question is, does that contract have to be in writing or can you have it in kind of a back room deal? I think the restriction would apply to both. You might have difficulty proving whether there's a contract in the back room deal thing. It's much easier to prove that when you got something in writing. But if you could approve it, I think the same restriction would apply. Peace, oop, another question. You, not if, if you're doing it within the larger zoning process. So you're saying, okay, we're now going to, we're going to open up a piecemeal zoning, which we're about to talk to, talk about, in order to accommodate this landowner's desired use of the property. That wouldn't run afoul of the restriction on contract zoning. That, you only run afoul of that is when you're doing zoning outside of the formal zoning process, which is a very public process. You're going in a back room and signing a contract that the public doesn't get to see, doesn't have any input into. So, but moving on to piecemeal zoning, you've done your comprehensive plan. You haven't spot zoned. You haven't created that little spot in the middle of your district. But now that landowner comes in and says, I want to put a quarry here or I want to put a grocery store. That is an example of, if you were to allow that, would be a piecemeal zone. As the slide says, it's a parcel specific change in zoning classification that occurs after the comprehensive zoning has been done. Now, it can be okay, but only if it's based on either a mistake of fact in the original zoning or comp plan. So just a mistake was made in the assumptions that lie behind the zoning. Or if there is evidence of a substantial change in the character of a neighborhood that was kind of not anticipated when the zoning occurred. But if you can't meet those and, you know, the factual record shows that the government understood what was going on in this area and how it was going to be developing over the next few years when it did its comprehensive zoning ordinance and decided that these, this area would be purely residential or what have you, then you can't get a piecemeal, you can't, this will be an impermissible piecemeal zoning. One other point is that even if you qualify for that, you can establish either a mistake or a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. The government is not obligated to grant you the piecemeal zone. It's just a restriction on the government's ability to grant piecemeal zone. Question? Well, one might be that the government zones an area on the belief that a major roadway is going in. And so they provide for commercial development along that roadway where it's going to be going in and residential development elsewhere. And then it turns out they were wrong and the road is going on the completely other side of the district. So it would no longer make sense to have the commercial district on the other side because there's no major road there. It makes sense to have it over here. So that would be an example where the government would say, you know, we built this whole zoning decision on the assumption that the road would be over there. Turns out it's over here. So we can go back in and do a piecemeal zoning and change those residential areas alongside the new location of the road to provide for that commercial use that we thought we were providing for on the other side. All right, now let's talk a little bit about conditional uses. Now, this is a term that also goes by the name special exceptions. You see them both used a lot. Special exceptions is, I think, kind of a misnomer because the thing about conditional uses is that they are actually provided for in the zoning ordinance itself. It's, you have uses that are allowed by right and then there are uses that you are allowed under certain conditions, conditional uses. And you call them special exceptions, it makes it sound like it's almost a variance or something. That's, you know, a special thing, it's an exception to the rule. But it's actually baked into the zoning ordinance itself. It's just a matter of you qualify, you satisfy the conditions for that conditional use. Now, the requirements that apply to it, again, it's identified in the zoning as being permissible only under certain conditions, has to be compatible with the neighborhood and further the purpose of the proposed use and shall further and not be contrary to, to the local comprehensive plan. An example might be, you know, a dentist office in a residential area where, you know, it's not, it's not really inconsistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. People need to go to dentists, unfortunately, from time to time. So that's something that you see. The other restriction, though, on it is that the effect of the, of the adverse effect of the conditional use cannot be unique or different from the effect that would, it would have if located elsewhere in the district. And what does that mean? That means that if you're putting this conditional use on a lot where through some quirk of geography or the character of the neighborhood or what have you, it's going to have an outsized adverse impact on surrounding uses than if it were anywhere else. That there's just something about that location within the district that would be, you couldn't, wouldn't qualify for a conditional use there. And, you know, an example that, kind of the converse of that example is a recent court case where folks challenged a funeral home as a conditional use in, in a particular district. And the zoning ordinance identified funeral homes as a conditional use and said, went on to say, you know, that had findings about the impacts associated with dust, noise and fumes, that the legislature has concluded that those are not inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. So neighbors sued to enjoin the conditional use on the theory that it's in a predominantly Asian American neighborhood and that with residents who have a cultural aversion to funeral homes, kind of a deeply seeded cultural aversion. And the Court of Appeals said, no, that doesn't count. Now, why doesn't that count? It's because we have to go back to zoning being a legislative decision. Here is the government saying, we're going to allow conditional uses, we're going to allow funeral homes on a conditional use and we're recognizing these types of impacts, dust, fumes, noise, as the types of things that we think are acceptable within this district. The fact that the neighbors are challenging, are saying that cultural aversion is what they're worried about, the legislature already ruled that out. Because so, so this is, again, this is legislation. The legislative body gets to define the conditional use and the types of impacts that it considers relevant to allowing conditional uses within the district. Variances. Now, variances you're probably familiar with, modifications to requirements, restrictions in zoning law concerning density, bulk. Most, I mean, in Maryland, we have, variances are typically area variances. And it's a way to allow some flexibility into the, into the zoning process and almost as a safety valve for taking. So if you, someone owns property and because of the way the zoning restrictions work, they can't develop on it, well, maybe they can get a variance to avoid the train wreck that happens when they come into court and force the government to buy the property. So it's, it's often used as a way to avoid the, you know, running afoul of constitutional restrictions. Now, there are restrictions on what qualifies as a variance. It has to be to avoid hardship due to conditions peculiar to the land, to the property itself. The applicant importantly can't create the hardship themselves. And the variance, again, this theme that you hear throughout all of zoning authority, cannot confer special privilege denied to others. Generally speaking, or the land use article only allows for size or area variances and therefore effectively prohibits use variances, which is a variance that would allow, now this name suggests, for a use that would not otherwise be allowed under the zoning ordinance. Now, that is, that provision is in Division One of the land use article. So it applies only in the six commissioner counties. That said, the limitation is fairly common across Maryland and other counties have similar limitations in their local codes. But where use variances are allowed, they are subject to an even more strict standard for their availability. Now, here's an example that kind of shows you what a variance is. So you've got an existing barn located on a large lot and a new residence must be placed, the pink building to the right is the new residence, and it has to be placed a certain distance away from that barn, the calculated MDS distance. Now, if you put the house right there outside the calculated MDS distance, you notice that you're in the setback. So you would violate the setback requirement if you were to comply with the MDS so that the owner cannot build a house on that property in compliance with both land use restrictions. So they can get a variance to, for the side setback requirement so they can build the house a little bit closer to the property line than they otherwise would be able to. Now, they're not causing the hardship here because that barn, it's an existing lot, that barn's been there. They just have this lot and they're going to develop it. And because of that proximity of the barn to their property, they can't put their house, you know, right smack in the middle of the property. So this is an example of where you could use a variance. Now, moving on to vesting, vesting is the concept that once a property owner has gotten far enough in the development process, they're essentially immune from changes of the law that would prevent them from developing as they would previously offer. from developing as they would previously offer. Now, why is this important? It's important because vested rights enjoy significant protections under Maryland law. Maryland takings jurisprudence pretty much follows the Supreme Courts, you know, gives the same protection to private property law. Big difference, though, when we're talking about vested rights. Maryland has a specific constitutional provision about vested rights and as a result, the Court of Appeals has identified that as an area where they're going to be more protective of property rights than the federal government does. So, pardon?
My understanding, at least, or from our county is that if a commercial development proposal has not submitted and had approved a site plan, then if rights change, well, before the owner does that, those rights still go forward?
The question is, in the gentleman's the question is, in the gentleman's jurisdiction, you don't have vested rights unless you have a site plan that has been submitted and approved. And that's correct because Maryland is what is called a late vesting state. You have to, in order to vest rights in Maryland, you have to follow existing applicable law and obtaining a development writer permit and have made changes on the property manifesting commencement of work. Now, the difference between a late vesting state and an early vesting state is that there are some states out there where you just, all you need is a building permit. You don't have to do work under that permit. There are some states out there where you just need like approval of a preliminary plan or something like that, not an actual permit, that that is enough to vest your rights. But in Maryland is qualifies as a late vesting states, you need both the permit and to undertake a little bit of work under that permit. And that's say, it serves kind of a public notice. When people see that you're working, putting in footers and whatnot on, on your property in reliance on a permit, they know that it's a done deal and you can't change the law to try to block it.
What if, if there, after the first point you have to follow the existing applicable law, what if that's actually challenged and you didn't follow a applicable law? Is that something that's often taken into account?
The question is, what happens if the property owner didn't follow existing applicable law? Would that defeat vesting and is that ever brought up in court? Yes, it would defeat vesting if you could establish that it, like if they built illegally, for example, if they just went ahead and started building the property or building the building without any type of authorization, you wouldn't vest your rights by doing that. You need them both. You need the properly issued permit and commencing work. Now, good question, if the government made a mistake in how they are, you know, interpreting or applying their own regulate zoning ordinance and the landowner is guiltless, you know, they've just been saying, hey, you've done everything you've told me to, you gave me my permit and now it turns out that permit is invalid, you know, I don't know the answer to that. It seems like an inequitable decision, but I'm not familiar with a case that fits that, that mold. Okay, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna go through boards of appeals very quickly. They're required for non-charter commissioner counties, municipalities authorized in charter and code counties. In non-charter counties, there spells out exactly what they have to, how they consist of, three members, three-year terms. Charter and code counties, again, a lot more authority, a lot more discretion to set your own rules, but they're all pretty much the same. They hear, they decide appeals where an error comes out of the local land use process. We talked about land use zoning as being a legislative decision. If someone has a problem with that, it gums up, it comes up through the Board of Appeals process so that they can take testimony, hear from witnesses, get facts and build a factual record about the specific property involved. Very different from the legislative zoning process. They hear applications from variances, all of them do. And in charter and code counties, they can hear a lot more because, again, charter and code counties have a lot more discretion of defining their own local powers. Again, Board of, the rules of procedure are very trial-like. They have to be, they're subject to the Open Meetings Act, they're recorded, testimony under oath. This is more like a trial-type proceeding than zoning, which is a legislative act. Again, more rules that make sure that the Board of Appeals process is open and that the public can see the, you know, the deliberation and the findings and conclusions that the Board of Appeals decides. Talked about it being quasi-judicial. They are subject to review by a court in a way that legislative decisions are very difficult to appeal, whereas Board of Appeals decisions are automatically appealed to court if other, if either party wishes to do so. Questions?
Yeah, on the Board of Appeals, the non-charter, what I'm seeing a lot of is application for extension time to do something for which approval to give them some years ago. And what is the criteria for determining whether those extensions should be given? In other words, the law forgets the permit or whatever, everything you need to build up a bunch or whatever on this piece of truck 10 years ago. And if the can has taken down, or it's taken down, or it's two years extension, and what is the authority of the Board of Appeals to say, no, you know, you've had eight years, you've had 10 years. Now, the circumstances, neighborhood has changed in those 10 years, you didn't do it in order to dance, go back to the same point.
Yeah, so the question is, Board of Appeals are hearing cases involving requests for extensions of time. What extension of time is too long such that if a developer, you know, gets approval and then sits on its hand for 10 years and its permits lapse, can they come in and get an extension of time? You know, sir, I just don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there is a bright line rule.
I don't think the Board of Appeals can really decide to do that. So a legislative body would have to amend their regulations to extend the life of a permit or a development approval that has been granted by the planning commission for appeals. The Board of Appeals in themselves, I don't think have the right to say, oh, I'm going to just give you a sentence. They have prescribed provisions. Again, it gets back to the issue of vested. And again, there are provisions that have occurred where the legislative body has extended the approval of their regulations. Again, usually their zoning orders should put in place how to ensure that they have all thoroughly implemented, taken that action of the Board of Appeals approval for additional use and they have a certain period of time to take advantage of it. And, and there is, there is an issue of, you know, that Board of Appeals, conditional use is not automatically perceived as, it goes with the app, that's just the result of the land. But those are conditions of approval. Those conditions need to be made sure that they're complied with. And so the conditional approval really, my experience has been, it goes with the property, it goes with the app, not the property itself. I have a hairdresser salon.
If I got a conditional use for a hairdresser salon in my house and I try to sell that, I would be cautious about selling and representing, oh, you can go ahead and have a hairdresser salon here, that's part of it and you add that to the value. That's not necessarily true. Those conditions don't automatically transfer. Well, what, you know, they, I would advise that person, go back and get your own conditional approval so that you can have your hairdresser salon in your house. So again, those are things that are part of the zoning administrator's duties along the way. But again, most of the time, your regulation should specify the life of that approval. And if it's not clearly specified in your ordinance, I'd encourage you to talk to your town attorney about clarifying those approvals along the way. Again, each community's different, so we can't give you perfect answers on anything. Happy to talk to you later on about details.
Right. Moving on, because we do have to speed things up, there are restrictions. Board of Appeals members cannot have ex parte communications with, with the party that's appearing before it, kind of a common sense thing in a way. If that happens, if you run into someone in the donut shop and you talk about a matter, you've got to disclose that to all parties and summarize the communication on the record. I'm skipping over this question slide because we've been getting questions. Now we're moving on to ethics. Now, all state or all local jurisdictions must have, well, the state ethics law prohibits improprieties and appearances of impropriety and it's, as you can imagine, this purpose is to ensure fair dealings by people, public officials. Now, counties and municipalities must enact provisions on conflicts of interest, final financial disclosure and lobbying. Those restrictions must be similar to state law. They don't have to be identical. If they need to be kind of tailored to local circumstances, that's permissible, but they have to be similar to state restrictions. Conflicts of interest, you can't hold outside employment that impair your impartiality or independence of judgment. You can't use the prestige of office for private gain. So, you know, if you're a planning commissioner and someone has applied for a wetlands permit and MDE is holding a public hearing, you don't go up there and say, and testify, I'm a member of the planning commission and this permit should be issued, it's the right thing. You're kind of invoking your office in favor of a private person and that's impermissible. You can't use confidential information acquired in your official duties for the benefit of the other, anyone else, or participate in a matter in which you have a legal or economic interest. Types of interests that we're talking about here is you have an interest in a business that is appearing before the, your agency, you're, are employed by a business that is negotiating a contract with the local jurisdiction. There's also restrictions on contingent fees. These restrictions also apply to you and certain close family members, spouse, parent, child, siblings. Also, you can't solicit or accept gifts of more than $20 from any person who's regulated by or seeks to do business with your agency after you've left employment. You can't act as the paid representative of another in connection with a matter that you've participated significantly. So it's not a complete bar, but if you worked on a matter while in the planning commission and then leave government service, you cannot be hired as a paid representative on that specific matter. Okay, when do you have to recuse yourself as a planning commissioner? Well, if your spouse has a development project that's coming before the commission for site plan approval, you're going to have to recuse yourself for that. You can't participate in any matter and you, in any way and you have to, disclosure is not enough. So remember, ex parte communications, there, disclosure is going to be enough. You probably aren't going to have to recuse yourself if someone just has a conversation with you at the donut shop. But if you've got your spouse appearing to, with a development project before the planning commission, no amount of disclosure is going to be sufficient. Any questions on that? I think we're done then.
You have, you are tested.
Oh, that's right, there's a test. Okay, you are tested. All right. Police power is choose all that apply. Authority to regulate, protect public health, safety and welfare? Sure. The basis for zoning and other land use regulations? Yep, we talked about that. Limited to the power to arrest a criminal suspect? No, that is an exercise of the police power, but it's not limited to that. Delegated by the state to counties and municipalities? Yes. This is not an all above, it's A, B and D. Development rights vest when construction is complete? Well, they will have vested by then, but they vest earlier than that. The applicant obtains government approval on a preliminary plan? No, that would be in an early vesting state. Maryland's a late vesting state. Applicant has a building permit and has made visible changes to the property thereby giving notice to the public. Ding 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 ding, that's the right answer for vested rights, public notice is printed. Yes, yeah. A regulatory taking occurs when your lawyer says so? That's not a bad answer because it's really hard to tell what is going to constitute a regulatory taking, but no, it's not right. Use is not permitted under current rules? Well, not necessarily. That could end up in a takings, but it's not necessarily a taking. Regulation removes all economic value in a property? Yes, if it's all, yes. When it is determined that a variance is needed? No, a variance is a way to avoid taking, but the fact that a variance is needed doesn't necessarily mean that there is a taking. Non-constitutional exaction occurs when the exaction has nothing to do with the governmental purpose for the exaction. Yeah, that fails the rational nexus test. The impact of the exaction far exceeds the governmental purpose of the exaction? Yep, that violates the rough proportionality test. There is both a rational nexus and rough proportionality between the exaction and the governmental purpose for the exaction. That's the test for an appropriate condition. It's not an exaction. Hearing before a Board of Appeals must be recorded, be held in the evening, have testimony taken under oath and include the recorded vote or failure to vote of each member. We kind of skimmed over this pretty quickly, but it would be A, C and D. They often are held in the evening, but they don't have to. Counties and municipalities must enact public official ethics rules for the following. Lobbying? Yeah, we mentioned that, we didn't really talk about it. Financial disclosure? Yep. And conflicts of interest? We talked a fair bit about that. There's where all of the above is the right answer. Ex parte communications from a party to a Board of Appeals member should be encouraged to gain additional information for decision-making? No. Always require recusal? No, we talked about that. Must be disclosed to all parties and summarized on the record. That's the right answer. Should be kept confidential under one or more executive privileges. There are some privileges apply, but they're not going to apply to someone who's outside of your agency. So that's it.
Great, thank you, Ed. We're gonna jump right ahead.
Wasn't working, like the people in the
We are not taking a break, we need to go.
All right. We're always behind on this class and Chuck's got the more interesting stuff coming up, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. All right, comprehensive plan. Many of you have probably been involved in comprehensive plans in your jurisdictions. It's one of the most important responsibilities, roles that a planning commission plays. I know a lot of jurisdictions are currently updating their comprehensive plans, so hopefully some of this will connect with you or you might have some examples that you can share. All right. So these are just general planning values, but they distinctly and definitely apply to a comprehensive plan. Perhaps the primary purpose of planning is to protect public health, safety and welfare. We've talked, I talked to you earlier about resource conservation. How are we doing? We're good? Okay. Very big important one is predictability and transparency. All right, people want to be able to look at a comprehensive plan and know where their community wants to grow, where, you know, what, what, what its vision is and what its policy, policies are. Always recommend Always recommend to anybody purchasing a home to look at what the comprehensive plan says for their area. Because, you know, that's the idea is predictability and transparency. And then very key is public participation in the planning process. Okay, so the planning commission does have a major responsibility in Maryland for the comprehensive plan. It is outlined, we talked about the land use article before, and their duty is to prepare it and interact and discuss it with staff and other experts and the public. And then to present to the local governing body, legislative body for final approval. All right. So Maryland has these 12 visions. It started off with seven with the 1992 Economic Growth Resource Protection Planning Act. And then since then, five more have been added with subsequent legislation. So comprehensive plans are required to embody and advance these 12 visions. If there are further descriptions in the land use article, we can also provide them to you if you'd like, but I think most of them are kind of pretty self-explanatory. You'll see a lot of them reflected in the later elements. So these are, again, visions, you know, the big, the big picture items and then the elements that which I'll also talk about delve into the specifics. All right, so what does a comprehensive plan have? All right, it has the community's vision for its future, right? Think of a vision as, you know, a desired end state, you know, what the, what the, your community you know, should look like, what, what do you want it to embody? But, but it also should look at the past. How have we evolved? What are our trends? What are our current conditions? And then, and then establish goals, objectives and policies to realize the vision. I like to think of goals as also like desired end states. You know, condition of your community objectives are kind of your measurable steps to get there. And then policies are what you're going to do, how you're going to make decisions, what actions and policies are you going to implement to get to that desired end state and to meet those measurable objectives along the way. All right. So what does a comprehensive plan do? What does it have? So it could have an inventory, it could have inventory of current land uses, your demographics, your transportation network, perhaps an inventory of areas that are sensitive and you want to preserve. All right, should analyze your growth, analyze both population, employment growth, the conditions of your roads, the capacity that you have for future growth. And again, analyze those areas you want to preserve. It should include recommendations. This could be recommendations for various implement, ways to implement a comprehensive plan through zoning, recommendations for business incentives. See down here with implementation strategies, partnerships, various programs. And then it should always include a feedback loop and ways to adapt. As we were talking earlier, you don't just create a plan, push the button, then don't look at it for years. There should be ways for feedback analysis, see what's working, what's not, and how you can adapt. And then obviously, comprehensive plans can always be amended and they frequently are. Okay. So the land use article does require certain elements for comprehensive plans. Now it's distinguished, charter counties have slightly fewer required elements than non-charter counties. Non-charter counties and municipalities have the same ones. Now there are some distinctions based on situation. So if you are on tidal waters of the state, you have to have a fisheries element, where if you're not on tidal waters, you don't have to have a fisheries element. If there is current, right here, mineral, there's current geologic information available. I don't know if that's explicitly defined. Need to have a mineral resources element. So this would be things like mining or quarrying. And then, but, and then obviously municipalities are the only ones that need to have a municipal growth. We talked about that earlier. If you want to annex a proper annex area, it needs to be addressed in your municipal growth element. If you're interested in water resources, we do have a whole session dedicated to this and, and climate change tomorrow in one of our concurrent sessions. And then we also have our transportation, MDOT is going to be talking here tomorrow as well. So these, and the land use element will give you more details on what these are required to have. Here's some more, all right, like the fisheries I was talking about earlier. And then the newest one is the housing element. This was a permitted element before, but as of June 1st, 2020, all comprehensive plans are now required to have a housing element. And that's the same for non-charter, charter and counties and municipalities. And then this kind of a new element, an affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement goes into effect on January 1st of next year. And then there are some optional elements or permitted elements that, that are available as well. A lot of this stuff is going to be incorporated into the other elements. But the land use article does, you know, provide it for you to give you suggestions on other ones you could include. When you think of elements, most people are going to think of them as chapters in a comprehensive plan, but they don't have to be. That may be a simple way to go about it. You have a chapter on housing, a chapter, a chapter on transportation. But I like to think of elements as like the actual term element, right? It has to have an element of your comprehensive plan that addresses these needs. That some, I've seen comprehensive plans where they'll have certain elements kind of interspersed throughout the plan, more thematic as opposed to chapter by chapter, but that is up to the jurisdiction themselves. So obviously, comprehensive planning is not easy. You often have to grapple with different viewpoints, right? The desire to preserve land with the desire for property rights, right? The need for more housing and capacity with the desire to, you know, limit growth or prevent residential density. You'll see that a lot, growth versus no growth. I'm sure, yeah, I see a lot of people shaking their, or nodding their head. You'll definitely, you'll definitely face that repeatedly. And then you need to engage a lot, a lot of people from, from staff. Often you want to create advisory groups of local residents, business leaders, organizations. You might even hire advisors or consultants, engineers, other experts, but you definitely need to engage the public. Not only is it help, it's, it makes it more transparent, gets more buy-in, you know, staff and planning commissions don't have the monopoly on knowledge in their community. And you really need to access that local knowledge if you're going to make an effective plan. One that you won't have to be amending constantly, hopefully. All right. So yeah, mentioned earlier, these are some potential stakeholders. Here's an example down here, you know, a lot of way to engage online. I mean, we'll see this, it's much more, more common now. But, you know, you'll have public meetings where you go out into the community, these are still very important. You know, they talk, it's like a distinction between high tech and high touch outreach. High touch is where you really need to meet people where they are. People are busy, planning's not at the top of their mind. But if you, if, if as a jurisdiction, planning commission, if you make the effort to go to them, a lot of touch points and then high tech is a way for people to engage also because they're busy online. And that's becoming much, much more common. I'm just All right, so this is an example here of a SWOT analysis, a lot of you might have used one of those before, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. It's a good way to think about your community. You could go through this as a planning commission, you could also do it with staff or the public. But there's all sorts of things that should be considered early on and throughout the, the planning process. What are existing conditions, right? This is, you know, this could be the state of your housing, your capacity, things we talked about earlier, analysis of roads. Were there any background studies, perhaps water and sewer infrastructure studies, traffic studies? The key issues facing your community. And then obviously you want to include public input. And then the planning commission has a vital role in reviewing the plan draft in various stages of the process. Okay. A second here. Okay, so, and then the comprehensive planning process involves coordination, both internal and external. All right, we talked about municipal growth earlier. You definitely need to coordinate, municipalities will need to coordinate with their county. Because that's actually a requirement that that coordination happen. So the municipality and the county both have come to agreement as much as possible. You're never going to get necessarily 100% consensus on this, but as much as possible on the county understands where a municipality wants to grow. You need to coordinate on school planning because schools obviously cut across jurisdictions often. Water resource planning, we know that water doesn't recognize municipal boundaries or jurisdictional boundaries. So you need to pay attention to that. Transportation planning and then comprehensive water and sewer plans, right? In Maryland, the counties control county comprehensive water and sewer plans, but a lot of the water and sewer plant infrastructure comes, is funded by and comes from municipalities, right? So there, there has to be a coordination there. So very important to, this isn't just an inward looking process. All right. Kind of the same thing we mentioned here. You've got, you have to work with other, other jurisdictions, not just counties, if you're nearby another municipality as well. So then there's the actual like formal process of a comprehensive plan. So 60 days prior to the public hearing, the first, the public hearing where the planning commission might recommend it for approval, 60 days prior to that, the jurisdiction needs to send it to Maryland Department. Well, most jurisdictions, not all charter counties, but most jurisdictions needed to send it to the Maryland Department of Planning for 60, what we call 60 day review. We receive it 60 days. On day 60, we send it out to other, our sister agencies, transportation, environment, department of natural resources. We ask for their comments within 30 days and we spend those last 30 days coordinating, pulling them all together into comments. And then we submit it to the, to the jurisdiction who then makes it part of the public record for the, the public hearing. Has anybody in here been a part of that and received comments from the Maryland Department of Planning? Yes. How, any, any thoughts or? So for the, for the benefit of the virtual audience, can you say which jurisdiction? La Plata, okay. Janine, say hi to Janine for me. I know Janine well. That's great, yes. So the question was, La Plata is the county seat of Charles, correct? So they had the, the comments on the plate and discussed a little bit more about coordination between the county and municipality. And you took that to heart, it sounds, and you worked with them, so it's great, thanks. Yes. Okay, okay. Yeah, that's, you know, we, we often receive insight or requests from the public. And as, as a state agency, we're always willing to listen and talk to them, but we always encourage, you know, planning hap, while there's a state agent planning happening, planning happens locally, we always encourage the folks to, you know, we get concern or requests from a local organization to talk about it with, with, with their county or municipality. In this instance, sorry for those who are on the call, we're talking about Calvert County's plan. And so we always redirect that back locally. And we hope, we, we want our comments to help contribute to that local process. Because as a Maryland Department of Planning, we don't have authority to change, disapprove or approve a comprehensive plan. It all happens locally, so we try to contribute to that local conversation. But there are a lot of other players in that local conversation. All right, to keep going, because I probably need to keep moving here. Eventually there is that public hearing and then recommendation for adoption. There are other things you can do, but for simplicity sake, we'll talk about recommended for adoption. Then it goes to council, the local legislative body, and they can, they can modify the plan. And it is required to be reviewed every 10 years. It doesn't mean it has to be updated every 10 years, but it is required to be reviewed every 10 years. And this tends to align with, yeah, right with you, Lisa, this tends to align with census data, the central census. It, it doesn't have to be initiated by the planning commission. There may be some local rules that would say differently, yeah, for, for charter, but and Chuck might know better than me, but I don't, there's, I don't think there's anything in the land use article that says how it's exactly initiated. It could be initiated by staff, the, the, the planning commission. And, I mean, I don't know if there's any, there's no formal definition of what initiation means. It's really this more of this backend that is heavily governed. There are best practices, but I don't
Joe
So the question, the question for the audience was, are there specific requirements for how a comprehensive plan is initiated?
Right, the land use article does not specifically specify that. And you're also correct, certain charters do. So in the case of Howard County, they actually have a mandate at the beginning of their process to go through a, a process of developing a work plan essentially of issues that they want the planning department and the administration to actually look at as part of that process. So they actually, in that case, Howard County actually adopts a, a work plan for that, that effort. Prince George's County also does, and, and actually to some degree, Montgomery County, more Prince George's, they have to initiate the process at the legislative perspective. And then they turn it over to the planning departments to go through a process. And they have a very tight schedule that they actually have to adhere to, back to the legislative body in a timely manner. Just to point out one thing, they did pass legislation that, as Joe pointed out, can you move back to that one slide before? The, the municipalities of non-charter, they require them to, if the council wants to change a, a recommended plan, they can do so. Now, there is a provision that says that the legislative body has to act within a certain period of time or, and they don't act, that plan goes into effect. They also have the ability to extend that process. So in the case of Frederick County, which is a unique situation, Frederick County is a charter county. But they also have in their charter that they would adhere to the non-charter provision. So hence the reason why, if you've been monitoring one of the most talked about Sugarloaf Mountain, they actually are under the guns and they've extended their timeframe, but they have to act or else that they either deny it or they approve it with modifications, but they got to do something before the clock runs out. And so it's important because we found a couple of times municipalities didn't realize that they had that clock running. So the legislative body thought, oh, I can take my own time. No, well, that changed when they changed the law there. So just point out, thanks.
And, and before we get into the next, so, well, there is technical assistance available. You know, Maryland Department of Planning has done a series of models and guidelines. Some of them are a little bit dated in some areas, but they're still, a lot of the true, the core concepts still remain. We, the most recent one is the housing element, models and guidelines. We have a mapping data dashboard on there. So I encourage you to look, review our website and review our resources. We also have regional planners assigned throughout the state that are available to, to help. The MPCA itself, if you're interested in deeper dive on comprehensive plans, we did last summer, the summer of 2021, we did an hour and a half workshop on mastering the master plan. It really digs into comprehensive planning. I can send you a link to the recording, there's also some slides on that, but we do have that much deeper dive than we've gone into today. And I'm going to save the questions for the end, if that's okay, just because we're behind. All right, we're going to look specifically at the planning commission roles and responsibilities. You know, we talked a lot about the comprehensive plan, but we'll go into some others as well. All right, so this is, this is not even the full team. But this is just some example of that a planning commission is a central player in the team. And, you know, locally, oftentimes the public will, will look to the planning commission. They'll think the planning commission probably has more power than it does. But they will, they will, they will look to you as people that they, they want to talk to about this, especially maybe even more certain staff. But you are a key part. And Board of Zoning Appeals as well, down here. Board of Zoning Appeals doesn't have a statutory requirement on developing a comprehensive plan. They may be part of an advisory group or be part of the discussion, especially if they've seen patterns of things that have come before them over the past 10 years that may need to be addressed in a comprehensive plan, or they might be involved in implementing regulations. But they don't necessarily have a statutory role in comprehensive planning. All right. So you can have a more formalized or more informal, formalized or informal role, but it's, as it's determined by the jurisdiction, I always encourage you to talk to your, your county attorney or staff on what, how your role is exactly defined locally. So I guess we're still stuck, we're still doing comprehensive plan a little bit. So you craft it, you recommend ordinances and regulations to implement a comprehensive plan. You create and apply implementation tools, you can be involved, usually an advisory role for mapping or other regula, regulations. And again, those 12 visions always remain. All right. We kind of already went through a lot of this, so I'm going to skip by that. Okay. So there is distinct roles between non-charters and municipalities, which again, think of those as the same or having the similar requirements, not exactly the same, but comparable. And then charter counties. So yeah, they, non-charter counties and municipal, municipal planning commissions have advisory role on these various implements, implementation tools, even to capital expenditures. They also, they do have some approval authority over the use of land for public uses, streets, public parks, and approval authority for subdivisions and site plans. These can be delegated through the adoption of local rules. Sometimes they're delegated down to the administrative level. Do any of you have, if you're either non-charter or municipal, municipal planning commission experience as in an approval role, not just an advisory role? It's okay if you don't. It's not, it's not everywhere, but. Again, sometimes it's delegated down to even the administrative or staff level. All right. Charter counties specifically look at your charter. They'll have some approval advisory roles, but it is specifically laid out in the charter. And we're not going to go into all, all of those examples now, but this guy over here, Chuck, if you want to talk to him afterwards, he probably has the list in his head, because he has a lot of things in his head related to this stuff. So. Let's get to, right. So other roles, so work sessions, right? Work sessions are more informal than public hearings. It tends to be a discussion with staff. You could bring in other experts, outside experts, advisors, consultants. There may be public comment accepted, there may be not, but they're typically less formal than public hearings. Public hearings should be very formal. They should be predictable, transparent. Obviously, their advertisement requirements, the public should know what to expect when they go to a public hearing. And yeah, it should just, yeah, transparent and regular. Adopting rules and procedures is also, is always an excellent best practice. And the MPCA did develop a website with some examples of these. The MPCA or Maryland Department of Planning can also provide feedback on these, but they help ensure, yeah, they help ensure transparency, consistency in your, in handling your meetings. Okay. So we were talking earlier about, excuse me. All right. Yeah, so may, may have approval of some site plans. So here's one here, just, you'll see lots of different kinds, but they typically show the layout of roads, stormwater facilities. They might have tabulated information about the site date itself, such as acreage, and might have the general or even sometimes more specific layout of buildings. Here's that tabular data there. So I'm sure many of you have reviewed site plans, will continue to review site plans, and they, they may look differently, but it's a, something you'll spend a lot of time doing. It is a, definitely contingent upon staff to help the planning commission get all the studies they need. They get the staff reports with enough time to review them, right? So you know, sometimes you're always up against the gun. You have to advertise by a certain time, but you also have to get the, the staff reports in on time, and you might not get them when you like to, but, and we all, and planning commissioners, most planning commissioners have full-time jobs. I understand that. And then you're, you're volunteering for a community at night. You have families, it's tough, the best you can, you know, you know, work with staff and others to try to come prepared to, to, to your planning commission meetings. Okay. Septics law role, so many of you might be familiar with the, the septics law. So essentially is jurisdictions had to lay out and map where they wanted to, where they were going to permit subdivisions on septic versus subdivisions on sewer. And this was, if they wanted to allow subdivisions on septic, that you had to adopt a tier map by December 31st of 2012, and then you needed to incorporate into your comprehensive plan. So planning commissions specifically do have a role on subdivisions in tier three areas. Any major subdivision in those must be reviewed through a public hearing by the planning board or commission, and whether or not that body is currently involved in, or currently tasked with reviewing major subdivisions. The law defines major subdivisions as, or sorry, defines minor subdivisions as not being more than seven, seven new lots. They, in the, in the defining of your own tiers, you could go less than that, but you could not go greater. And as part of the review, the planning board of commission has to consider the cost of providing local government services to the subdivisions and what impact the subdivision will have on the environment and natural resources. So. All right. We'll go through the review here. Hopefully I left you enough time here, Chuck. The comprehensive plan is a reflection of, we all, we all know the answer, correct? Will be all of the above. All right, kind of going from the, the high level at high level down to the more specific. How many planning visions are there? 12, correct? What was the original number? All right. involves all of them. True. Reviewed, but not necessarily updated. All right. Let's go to Chuck and we'll save the questions again. Chuck's going to go over growth management.
Well, if, if any of you have taken this course before, I always get the short end of the stick in terms of the time left over, but I'm fast and I'll talk quick and we could talk later on and details along the way. So I'm just going to give you, I'm going to blaze through this stuff about the implementation of your comprehensive plan, the, what all is involved with that effort. So, and what are the tools that you have to implement your comprehensive plan? The most powerful tool you have is zoning. So zoning is in fact, the, the, the number one tool for you to use, involves a text and a map, typically involves that Euclidean zoning conversation that, that Adam talked about in terms of, of doing the, the densities and separation of uses, et cetera. And the, and the uses are, are defining the bulk arrangements, the densities, massing, et cetera. You typically have a map. Traditional zoning, again, you define them into specific groups along the way. More modern way, really isn't modern. If you go down, you're going to go on your tour later on to downtown Frederick Quay, that existed pre-zoning. And so we're kind of like, realize, oh my God, that's pretty cool stuff. So in fact, mixed use has been around forever, but in fact, a lot of regulations have now incorporated it in, tried to define it, trying to ensure that you actually have a mix of uses. And again, every jurisdiction has their own different flavor. I've, I've worked in a lot of different jurisdictions and have learned that I look to their jurisdiction and, because it's a unique picture of their community, it's very personal along the way. So again, in addition to the traditional Euclidean zoning and the mixed uses, you often have overlay zones. So overlay zones usually lie on top of the zoning. They typically don't change the underlying permissible uses along the way. Now, it might exclude a few things. Typically will add on a review process. So if you're in a historic district, you have historic district overlay, it means that those properties that are in there have to go through an additional review process. They may have some additional criteria along the way. You may have an overlay for an environmental area. That may restrict a certain amount of activity in there, but it also may go through a different review process. So there are a number of different overlays from noise zone overlays to airport overlay districts to, you know, you name it. And, and it's really dependent upon what your community is, and it should always be based upon conversations you have during your comprehensive planning process. So don't pull something out at the last minute and put it in your zoning order and say, oh, we got to do this. Well, what's the basis? Why are you doing this? Because then that really starts to call into question why you're, you're, you're adding that regulatory perspective. Zoning, again, form-based zoning is a new thing. It, it, it's a, it's kind of back to the future in some respects, but really what it does is it design, it, it regulates the structures and it doesn't care as much about what the uses are inside the structures, the, the premise being a lot more performance-based that, that if we can control the structure and the form and its relationship to the road in the right of way, we actually can create a more flexible, dynamic and, and powerful tool. Again, recognizing that, that zoning can't be done in a vacuum. It is a creation, it, it's a creature of your community, but it is also, it's influenced by market forces. So market forces push you in a certain way and, and you say, well, we need to have this residential neighborhood right along this main road. And the market doesn't support that. You're either going to have people that are complaining about all the traffic that they're at, or it's not going to develop. And someone says, I'd love this to be commercial if you could be. So you have to recognize market forces are very important factor, they should factor into your comp planning process, but also they go into the zone. Second most powerful tool we have is subdivision. Subdivision is the division of land into one or more parcels, one being that you can actually consolidate lots together. That's really a form of subdivision. And subdivision has a lot of things that often occur with it. So a lot of times your subdivision includes the regulations about the width of the road. So typically, if I'm working on a local community, one of my things I put in a comprehensive plan is the information about the right of ways, the roads. What kind of roads do I want to have? Is it a major road? Is it a, a arterial road or major collector or minor collector, local road? Well, that character that I'm defining in my comprehensive plan then goes forward into the regulatory process of development regulations and often will dictate the width of the road. It also will determine what kind of improvements are, are associated with that. So if my, if I have a developer that's going to add a road and put a road in and dedicate the road, what kind of improvements and expectations do they have? And again, the sooner they know about it, they build it into their development process or proposal, their, their portfolio, and, and you know, they got to be able to pay for the improvements that you want to do, or else the project won't go forward. Landscaping standards, design, stormwater management, all those other things factor into the division, ultimately shows up in a subdivision plaque that gets approved by the planning commissions, often at the municipal and, and non-charter. It gets recorded in the courthouse. Deeds or written properties are all transferred after that subdivision activity occurs. Third most important, uh, planning implementation tool is water and sewer plant. And this is controlled by the county, so it typically will control where sewers and water is going to be served, when it's going to occur along the way. Supposed to be updated every three years. It includes municipal systems as well as the county-controlled systems along the way or private systems. Cecil County, for example, has private utilities that, that are often, they're one of the, one of the few. And then there's also these sanitary districts along the way. So depends upon maybe a quasi, a public arrangement. So these are the factors that you include into that process of the massive. So it's going to guide development approvals, identifies projects, includes in the capital project, a process, and again, identifies new service as well as maybe upgrades to their services. So these are the things you can consider as part of it. This is a lot comp plan-like related, so where am I going to, my future services? How much development is going to occur? How do my, how do I size my water, my sewer, sewer plant? So a lot of engineering stuff that goes into this process. So it's, but it's important to recognize that a lot of times you have to go back and retrofit. So one of the things that are often seen now in stormwater management is that the, when these heavy rains come in or increased water table, you start to see what's called INI infiltration into those existing pipes. And that goes to some kind of facility somewhere. Often if it goes in INI, it goes to your water and true, water treatment plant, and you're treating rainwater that you really, that isn't that dirty, but in fact, it, it's overlay, it's overwhelming your system. So a lot of times you actually factor into your capital improvements program, some kind of redevelopment and revitalization of your own infrastructure along the way. Talked about APFOs earlier. APFOs, 13 counties and municipalities have used them. That, I need to check that may have gone down jurisdiction or so. And particularly when there's a high growth, people are concerned about it. PTA members are saying, what are you guys doing on our schools? Why aren't you controlling development? APFOs are a means by which to control the pace of growth. It's not intended, and you'd lose in court if you put an APFO in place and say, we got a moratorium forever. You're going to lose ultimately. I'm not the lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, but you're going to lose because you're not using APFO. The APFO gives you time. Say, hold off that development, let me get my capital infrastructure in place so that I can approve that we've accommodated accordingly. So it's important that relationship is understood along the way. And again, sizing of facilities and those types of things. Any jurisdiction can adopt them. Development approvals can be contingent. So there's, again, it's, it's more complicated. Get your attorneys involved in that process. Again, has to be reasonable. Can't just say, well, you're going to have to build us a whole new high school for you to move forward. You're going to probably, again, good chance you're going to lose because that's not reasonable. Get back to all of that stuff that Adam pointed out in terms of reasonable proportionality along the way. Just to back to, again, got to have standards, got to have, it's ongoing, you have to commit to maintaining those standards. Look at your facility, main, track your facilities over time so that you actually know when a road starts to fail and when it starts to improve along the way. Jurisdictions, if you do adopt an APFO, you're, you're are required to submit every two years a report to us that identifies your deficiency. We produce an annual report to the legislative body that includes the local, this is often part of your local government and your reporting process, and we report to the state. So we actually take the information that jurisdictions provide us on when their APFOs have held up development along the way. So, so those are the requirements for the APFO. I'm moving forward. Annexations, capital improvement, again, mentioned before, capital improvement's a lot like comp planning. It's a blueprint. Municipalities are supposed to be reviewing the local comprehensive, I'm sorry, local capital improvements plan and making a determination of whether or not it is consistent with the comp plan. Sometimes they don't do that. So just be aware that that is in the, the land use article. These are the sources, the typical sources, general fund, obligation bonds, CDBG, if you're an entitlement community, typically the state does have a CDBG program, but you shouldn't rely upon it unless you've got a particular project. They have a legal responsibility in the land use article to determine whether or not the, the capital improvement project is consistent with the comp plan. So if they're putting a park and they say a capital improvement, you have a capital improvement and we, we have a park, we're putting a park here, and the, so the planning commission should say, our comp plan doesn't say that. Well, then one that tells me that, one, they shouldn't be doing a capital project without you of updating your comp plan along the way. What you typically won't be able to do, or I would advise about it, is what financing mechanism is used with respect to that review. So if they choose another financing and the local planning commission says, you shouldn't be doing a bond. Well, I'm not sure you have a leg to stand on because the comp plan doesn't get down into those weeds, how you actually implement. But if in fact, the comp plan so, shows where the parks are, and they're proposing a new park, and that park isn't in your comp plan, there is a, there is a disjointed mismatch, and that's an area that I would encourage the legislative body and the planning commission to, to address and resolve. Then typical process inventory, as Joe talked about before. Then, typical process inventory, as Joe talked about before, do some analysis. You have opinions, solicitor, you do evaluations, you test the stuff, prove your comprehensive capital improvement program, and you monitor. Typical planning process. Municipal annexation. Municipalities do not have to annex. You are in the driver's seat when it comes to annexations. A local property owner doesn't have to annex either. You are not in a control situation forcing a municipality, or forcing a property owner to annex. Except if they want either, one, higher densities or a use that you would allow in the county one, or two, you control your utilities. You control your utilities, and you, they're gonna come knocking at the door. They're gonna say, hey, they're gonna have hat in hand and say, I want to come into your town. Now, this is the only time you have it. What's in it for me? What's in it for me? So there are provisions for municipalities to go through the process of doing an annexation agreement. And you're supposed to, as part of that process, to do an annexation plan, which is based upon that municipal growth element. See, all this stuff's just connected together? My God, we're planning! So procedures of annexation. You can't annex a piece of property that's three miles away from your municipality. It's gotta be contiguous, and there are some guidance of that, but it's loose. It's loose. And have people used public right-of-way to connect to a piece of property? Yes. Is it advisable? Not normally, because my argument to you as a planner and for municipality is, how are you providing public services and support to that annexed property? If it's going all the way out there, are you draining your resources by running your public works department out there to plow those few streets? If there, if that's a problem, then you should be thinking about, is that a good idea? It has to be contiguous too. So it's gotta be touching in some fashion or other. It can't be in another municipality or corporate boundary. And you can't create an enclave. Well, it's an enclave completely surrounded. Now, what's, what's the way around it? Have an umbilical cord of railroad right-of-way, like Frederick said he's done, out to the county and keep the piece of property. So there are ways, but you can't completely surround it. Okay, why? What did I do? What did I do? What did I do? Did something. There you go, there you go. Roles of development, so development, roles for development in newly annexed. You can actually, in your negotiation, you can, you can say, well, we, we annex you, but we don't want you to answer too much of a density. And so there's certain limitations on that. And, but you can prohibit certain development activities in that. But that's, again, you don't have to annex, but talk to your attorneys on where that process, where you can go and where you can't go. Because once they're in, and you don't have an agreement with them, guess what? They're like everyone else in your community. So you rezone them, and you didn't have an annexation agreement with them in place. They can do whatever they want, and you have no control over at that point. So you control when they're outside. The old adage, you go, it's easier to stay out than to get out. That's the other thing along the way. So. Development rights and responsibility agreements. Powerful tool, particularly in terms of wanting to get certain assurances. This is close to contract zoning, but it's not. What it is, is it gives you the ability to have a quid pro quo because it deals with the issue of vesting, and it deals with the issue of giving assurances. So what it basically says is, on an agreement that will give you this particular activity here, we'll approve this, but you're gonna provide certain improvements along the way, and we're gonna not change the rules for a certain period of time. So it's valid up to five years unless extended. And again, it's a negotiated arrangement for particularly public improvements and certain assurances that you're not gonna change the rules halfway through. So if you have a thousand-unit, major plan unit development, and they're freaking out that, you know, two years into this, you're gonna change the rules on them, they might want to have a development rights and responsibility agreement in place to ensure that the investment they're putting in is still there along the way. But again, get your attorneys involved, and it's not simple. We got lots of other tools. Mako and MML are excellent sources of information. We also have a smart growth information clearinghouse, smartgrowth.org. If you're bored and you have insomnia, we have a huge archive of probably over 100 different webinars that we have produced in the past eight years or so. We do regular webinars. If you were involved or aware of the Walkinars and MDOT's Walktober program, we produce those webinars. And so we encourage you to participate in those along the way. Questions? Zoning is? Comprehensive process. Subdivision should be proposed, location of? All the above. According to the state law, the county water and sewer plant should be kept? Three years. Funding, capital improvements include? All the above. I know, unless amended or extended, local government body, how long is development rights and responsibility grant? Five years. Which of the following is true about newly annexed land? Property is contiguous to existing municipality, can't be within another municipality, can't create an enclosed enclave? All the above. Okay. You will be getting a certificate. It probably won't be, is this cool looking thing? Yeah, it won't be. It's actually this thing. I need to make sure you have your email to us. So if you haven't, check that list again. Please do that. We're gonna look at the, if there are any. We have, I don't know, I can't believe this, but we don't have. I gotta believe we have more. Oh my God, we do have. Hold on here. Okay, we have oodles of questions that we're gonna try to answer quickly here on their part because these people have been diligent along the way, and we have done a terrible job. That, yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry, after all. Okay, cool. Any more questions? Only 15 minutes. I don't see any questions there. We have 15 minutes over, so I apologize for that. We're gonna get you. Yes, question? Yes. Okay. Unless you want to share and everyone. Okay.
Conflict of interest. You address this thing as an episode. Focuses on the public official, but it doesn't address a conflict of interest that could occur if a contractor is doing work in the private industry as well as for the municipality or the county. And I wondered if you might address that.
All right, let me, I just wanna see the question for folks. The question was, how does conflict of interest rules, requirements, impact a private, somebody in private industry that also, that works in development, but also works for the jurisdiction? Or is it addressed? Is it addressed?
Yeah, it's, it's not addressed because these are rules that are specific to public officials. If you're a private contractor, they don't apply to you. There might be other restrictions, conflict of interest provisions. One example that jumps to mind is maybe you hire a law firm to help out with a complicated legal case, and they might contact you and say, hey, we want to represent this other person who's adverse to the county. They would have to come to you because that's a conflict of interest under the rules, the lawyer's rules of professional responsibility. So they'd have to clear that with you. But the law we're talking about here applies only to public officials, not to contractors.
Yeah, and I'll just add that you will often see engineering firms, planning firms represent a lot of different folks and a lot. So they'll, one time they'll represent someone in the county, one time they're gonna, they don't have any conflict of interest because they're not a public official. But you're gonna, but they can argue both sides as a private planning firm, and they often do along the way. They're not, they're not bound by the same level of conflict of interest as the attorneys are, that may have their own set of conflict of interest aspects. So planning, planning firms and engineering firms are not necessarily bound by that. Correct, Adam shaking his head. So that's that. Any other questions of us? Again, thank you so much for taking the time. You'll be getting your notice from us. We do have, and I will include in my, our email, the link to the handout. So some of you, or the PowerPoint. So some of you, we will provide you the PDF. Many of you got that already sent to you earlier, but we will, we send that so that if we have your email, you will be able to get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation today. So again, thank you so much for coming, and enjoy the rest of the conference. Thank you again.